Hi, welcome to the August Board Wrap-Up Show with Superintendent Dr. Pennington. School begins coming up very soon. In fact, that's a great place to start our show. Dr. Pennington, as we record our program today, school is set to begin for all of the Ponca City Public Schools.
It's August 17th. It's our first day, and that's a Wednesday. And obviously, if people, you know, you can, you kind of know when school's getting ready to start, just because all of a sudden, you see teacher cars in the parking lot as they're getting their classes ready. We have, you know, a week or so of parents going to school and enrolling. There's just a lot more activity around our school sites. And it's always important for our viewers to remember that, that, you know, depending upon where you travel, for instance, you know, you don't want to drive down Highland between 14th Street and 5th Avenue from about 7:45 to 8:45 every morning, because it's just packed with, with parents who are taking their children to Roosevelt, or students who are going to the high school. And now that we've opened the pre-K Center at Washington, that building, which has been open the last two years, will now be, once again, a functioning school site. So that particular area of town is always very crowded. And then, of course, anybody that's ever been on the west side of Grand Avenue at, when, at the beginning or end of the school day because of Lincoln and west, know how congested that is. So, and that kind of happens every part of town for, really, you think about the, you know, how many hours there are in a, in a workday. It's a very small part of the day. But just remember, and also remember that, that that means that we're going to have students who are walking to school and riding bikes. And as much as we would like, especially those elementary age students, to, you know, to be careful and to pay attention and follow safety rules, reality is, they're kids. And sometimes they do kid things. And as adults, we just have to always be aware of them.
Couple of exciting things as we begin the 16-17 calendar school year. Obviously, the school zones are probably the most important thing, but Trout Elementary opens back up, and you mentioned the pre-K Center. So those are just two of the buildings that will be occupied this year.
You know, we've done lots of, we've had lots of projects this summer. And anybody that has driven down Grand Avenue in the last month has noticed the new windows we've put on at East, and the way that that building, you wouldn't think that, that replacing windows would have such a dramatic effect on the appearance of the building. But, you know, it really has changed the way East Middle School looks. It's, you know, it's, it's an institutional building. I mean, it was, that building was built in the late 20s, and it just has that institutional look that schools had that were built back then. But, you know, with these new windows we have, it's, and it's kind of brightened the building up. We've painted the doors on the outside to match the window trim. And it just really has dressed up that facility. So we're really excited about that. We had a major renovation project at Lincoln Elementary. We moved the office to the front of the building, and we built, took the existing space that was there, where the office used to be, and renovated it. And obviously, we mentioned Trout. Trout had been shut down for a year, because in addition to moving the office and renovating the office areas, we also added new classrooms at Trout, so that we've gotten rid of the portable buildings that have been there for, I don't even know, a lot longer than I've been here. So we're really excited about that. And, and we're actually going to have two open houses on Sunday, August 21st, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. There will be an open house at Trout and an open house at Lincoln, so people can go and kind of look at, at the dramatic changes that have been made. But we also did some work at Liberty. It was not, the office at Liberty was already in the front of the building, so we just had to create the secure entrance there. And we've done the same thing at Roosevelt. We've created a secure entrance there. It's not as dramatic as the changes that took place at, at Trout and at, and at Lincoln. So we're excited. This is, you know, your bond issue money at work. The other part, thing that's pretty exciting, Phil, is we're getting closer and closer to the final design for the, the press box, the football locker room, and the weight room improvements to our athletic facilities. And we're also getting closer to the final design on the concert hall. So we really have, and those are really, those are really the big projects in this last bond issue. So we're excited about things that are getting ready to happen. And, and really, this, you know, as we get after football season this year, you're going to see lots of activity, construction activity around the high school. Now, that in itself will be, will cause some inconveniences. We know that. But we think when it's all said and done, our patrons are really going to be happy with the improvements we've made to our facilities.
Well, with the timetable of the Hutchins coming down, probably in, in late October, in November, does it look like spring, they'll start that project?
Well, we hope to start construction, probably, we, we hope to bid the project in December. And so then, you know, it's just a matter of, after that, there's about a 30-day time period from the time that bids are open to actually start construction. We could probably start in February. Of course, what you don't ever know you're going to deal with is weather, especially in north central Oklahoma. I mean, last winter, we could have built facility, we wouldn't have had to stop for anything. I mean, we never, never had any bad days that would have delayed construction. When you're, when you talk about starting in February, March, and you're talking about, you know, the, it, the winter and the spring, and, you know, you just, you just don't know what you're going into. And I tell you, this year, with all, with all the rain we've had in July and August, I mean, who would ever have thought that, that you'd be dealing, I mean, we didn't have any outside construction going on. But if you were trying to build a building this summer, you'd, you'd be pretty far behind schedule because of the rain we've had. So, you know, you just don't know.
Absolutely. A couple of things that we wanted to talk about, about the board meeting. You wanted to update patrons on our funding as we head into the 16-17 calendar school year.
Right. You know, last year, we talked about funding a lot. And I'm sure people, you know, probably got tired of me talking about it on every show, it seemed like. So I want to let people know where we are. We have received our initial state aid allocation for the 16-17 school year. It is less than the allocation we received for the 15-16 school year, but it's better than what we ended 15-16 with. So, you know, in the neighborhood of, oh, a couple hundred thousand dollars. We finished the year, we, when, when everything was, was, was done, and we had been, actually got another budget cut at the end of June, we ended up with, with, from all sources of revenue, we received about a million dollars less last year than we were supposed to receive. So we've lost a million. Right now, we've gained 200,000. We've made enough staffing cuts to, to accommodate the state aid revenue loss that, that we've received. But we have about, you know, I haven't mentioned that we, from what we lost, lost last year to where we are this year, overall, our budget is right at $700,000 less than it was this time last year. So, that being said, because of the cuts, the hiring freezes that we put in place in January, and because of some, some spending cuts we made, or we, you know, we, we, we cut, amended, cut budgets to the building. And basically, we just kind of froze everything in place where it was. We've entered this year, we think, in a solid financial position. I don't think anybody knows whether the state budget that was passed is going to last or not. We just saw the revenue numbers for July, and once again, state revenues were down, I think, for just the 17 straight months, that we've collected less than we did the year before, the same month. So things are not better in Oklahoma, even though you hear things about, you know, maybe school funding is this, or this has happened, or that's happened. The reality is, we continue to still be in a recession as a state. I don't know at what point it becomes a depression. But that's where we are. There's a couple of things the legislature did in appropriating money to put more money into the general fund to schools, that, you know, kind of give us money on one hand and take it out. The other, the biggest area was textbook funding. We receive textbook funding every year, and those are funds that are earmarked for textbooks. And last, this year, for 16-17, they, they did not allocate any money to the State Department for textbooks. Instead, they put that money that had been going into textbooks and put it into the state aid formula. So while, obviously, on one hand, it's, it's good to have more state aid money, on the other hand, if you don't have textbook money, you're going to be spending some of your state aid allocation to help buy textbooks, or you're just not going to buy textbooks. This happens to be a, a big adoption this year. It's mathematics. And the other danger in that is that if you, if you miss a cycle, then, you know, then it could be seven more years before you come back and buy textbooks again. And especially with the new standards, we, I mean, I mean, you know, the legislature had to make some tough decisions. I understand that. But, but that was, that's one of those kind of things that, you know, you just kind of can't let that one slide. So that's, so that's kind of what's going on with funding. We were able to give all of our teachers and support personnel a step increase. And so what does that mean? Well, we have a salary schedule. And so each year, everyone earns more money than they did the year before as they move down the salary schedule. It's not a cost of living increase. Our, our steps are, you know, have been, and the teacher side have been negotiated. On the support side, they've been in place for a long time. And, but they're not, you know, we don't go in and say, well, the cost of living's gone up 2%, so you're going to get a 2% step increase. It didn't work that way. Probably, if you look at it, it probably averaged about a percent and a half per person's where it comes in. So once again, because we haven't had a significant funding increase for schools in the state of Oklahoma, the earning power of our teachers and our support staff has definitely not kept up with inflation, and, which makes us harder for us to find teachers, makes it harder for us to find assistants and custodians and maintenance workers and all those kinds of things. So, you know, we, we, we kind of keep digging ourselves a hole in Oklahoma. And, you know, I don't, Phil, I don't know what's going to take to change it.
You hear a lot in the, in the news in Oklahoma City and Tulsa, mainly because that's where a lot of the information is out of regarding teacher bonuses or stipends or $5,000, the numbers. Nothing really solid, though, is there on that?
No, there's not. You know, the, the hope we have, and it, and it really is the only thing that's out there right now, and that is the one cent sales tax that's going to be on the ballot in November, State Question 779. And that would create a new permanent funding stream for Oklahoma schools. Obviously, as we get closer to the election, we'll probably talk about it more. You know, there, if you, if you, if you listen, there are basically, it kind of seems like there's two arguments out there. One argument is, and, which, this is very concerning for cities, because the city relies upon the sales tax. And their concern is that if we add a penny to our sales tax, and that sales tax is devoted to schools, or voted to the state, because it becomes a statewide tax, then as a, then as a city, I don't have the flexibility to go in and ask my voters for a sales tax to do something, whatever that something may be. And that's legitimate concern, because our cities operate on sales tax. They're also concerned that our sales tax would get to be so high that it would put us at a disadvantage to other areas. For example, you know, people from Ark City, I don't know what the sales tax is in Kansas, but, you know, there may be a point where either people from Ark City would not come to Ponca City to buy things, or people from Ponca City might drive to Ark City to buy things because the sales tax is cheaper. The big issue is the internet, and the fact that if you buy from Amazon, and some of those other, that do not have a presence in this, a physical presence in the state of Oklahoma, then they don't collect sales tax. And that's becoming more and more widespread as, as the internet is able to customize shopping, and you can do it from your home rather than going, you know, out to shop somewhere. You know, I don't know how big that's going to be. I mean, it's, it's growing every year. But to some extent, shopping is a social activity. You know, people go shopping together, and you can't replicate that online. So I think, I think there's probably a point out there where it kind of peaks. But it is a problem. And so, and so those concerns are legitimate. Kansas, just last year, had a, passed a big, passed a one cent sales tax increase. That was to fund general operations for the state of Kansas, because they've cut their income tax so much that the state was broke. And, and so that's, that's where they are. Texas has always had a high sales tax, because they don't have a state income tax. So, you know, I don't know in the end of the day where that all lays out. What I know is this, is that we've been, I think Governor Boren, President Boren launched his initiative sometime last fall. And so we had a legislative session where the legislature had the opportunity to come up with another plan. And we've had a summer for someone to come up with another plan, that they could present to the people and say, look, this is what we, this is what we're committed that we're going to do. The governor has a cha, has had a chance to come up with another plan. You know, she could, she could have brought state leaders in, they could have sat down, and they could have said, look, we've got a three, four, or five-point plan that next session, that we're going to enact to make sure that we stop the hemorrhaging of teachers across state lines. Or that will encourage more young people to become teachers. Because right now, you know, the issue is not just people who leave Oklahoma, but it's the people who don't go into education anymore when they go to college, because they look at it, and they don't see, they just don't, they don't see that it's, that it's worthwhile to them. And look, teachers have always known, when you become, when you decide to, when you decide to become an educator, you know that you're not going to make as much money as, and you can fill that blankie, you're not going, as a lawyer, a doctor, an engineer, you know, other professions. But the gap was not as large as it is now. You know, when I made that decision 40 years ago, I could look at maybe what somebody was making as a, as, as somebody as, as a banker, you know, or an insurance salesman. And, you know, I could look, I could look at that, and I could make an informed decision that, yes, I'll make a little bit less money, but I'm going to get to do what I really want to do. Which, for me, I was going to get to coach. That's what I wanted to be a coach. And so, for me, that's what I got to do. And so it was worth that trade-off. And I could sit down and have a plan, that I could do some things by working in the summer, maybe starting a little business, selling real estate. I could do some things in the summer that would, that would kind of bridge that gap a little bit for my family and I. But today, you can't do that, because the gap is so large that you can't make that up in a summer doing something else. And so people, young people are making other decisions. And I don't think any of us blame them for that. I think we all want all of our children to go to school, get a college degree in something they want to do, something they enjoy, but also something that allows them to support themselves and support their future families. And, and so we've got to close that gap. And as of today, there's not a plan. And so I, I, I believe that when we roll around in November, that the only plan out there is going to be State Question, you know, 799, and the voters of this state will have a decision to make. And because, again, you know, right now, it's just tough. I've talked to, a minute, a lot of our viewers know who Kenny Ray is, former football coach here at Ponca City. And Kenny and I were having, we were just visiting one afternoon, and his son Tanner teaches in Norman, has been there for about the last, I think, last 10 years. And Tanner'd been up, and he was talking to his dad, and he was talking to him about the fact that he had had three friends, three of his best friends that worked with him in Norman Public Schools, and they had all left Norman and taken positions in the Dallas area. And every one of them got a $10,000 raise to go two hours south. You know, they can still come to, they're all U grads, they can still come back to Norman for ballgames, they can still do that kind of stuff, but they all left. And, you know, you, you can't, I can't blame anybody for that. I can't blame anybody for that. And so we have to figure that out, or we're going to be in a position that I, we're not going to have any more teachers. And, you know, even with all the teaching jobs that were eliminated, the state is still having to issue emergency certifications. That means somebody's not quite as qualified as they ought to be to teach in the schools in this state. I think we have five or six people on an emergency certification that are going to work for us this year. They're good people, but they're not, they don't quite have the credentials that we would have required them to have five years ago. So.
Another issue you dealt with at the board meeting was wind farms. And I'm sure a lot of people ask, do the school systems make any money from all these wind farms that have popped up all over the state?
So, wind farms play, pay property taxes, okay? And from the beginning of wind farms until December 31st of 2016, in addition to the federal tax credit that wind farms got, and a clean energy tax credit provided by the state of Oklahoma, they also were able to participate in what is known as the Avalorum reimbursement fund. And the Avalorum reimbursement fund is a state program that if you're a business and you meet certain requirements, either for new construction, expansion, purchasing of, of equipment, whatever it may be, that you can apply for and receive a five-year exemption from property taxes. Now, the way that works is for that five-year time period, the state of Oklahoma pays your property taxes for you. About two years ago, some groups across the state started, started to look at all the wind farms that were going up. They started to see all the Avalorum dollars that the state was paying on their behalf. And they started to basically say, we can't afford this. You know, there's no way that the state is going to be able to generate enough tax revenue that they can pay all the property taxes for all these wind farms that are projected to be developed. And so, two years ago, the state said, we're doing away with the Avalorum tax credit. Then they still get huge tax breaks. One of the reasons that we continue to be in this recession is because we're not collecting any corporate income tax in Oklahoma. And the reason we're not collecting corporate income tax is because of tax credits that companies, wind farms are a big player in this, that they're cashing into the state treasury. So they're taking, they're going in and, and they're pulling money out of the state treasury to, for this tax credit they've earned. So, so they do pay property taxes. But in the near future, K County Commissioners are going to be presented with a proposal from a company called Duke Energy. And Duke is, I don't know, one of the top five largest energy corporations in America. And the, the wind farm that we see going up now, north of Highway 11, Duke Energy is involved in that. So, and kind of the way, what, one company builds the wind farms, then another company operates them and sells the electricity, is kind of my understanding of how this works. And the Duke people have plans to, to build several more wind farms in this area. The one that we're going to talk about, that the county commissioners are going to have to make a decision on here pretty soon, is, will be south of Highway 11. So basically, when you drive down Highway 11 on your way to I-35, you'll have wind towers on both sides of you. And what Duke Energy has asked the county commissioners to consider is to grant, is to create a tax increment financing district for a period of time. And they originally said 20 years. Now they're talking about five years. That's called a TIF. And so what a TIF does, is what happens, is the county will continue to assess the taxes on those wind farms. But rather than that money going to either the school districts where the wind farms are at, to county government, to ambulance service, all the different things that property taxes go to, that money will go into a, and this is my paraphrase, I'm sure attorneys would not like this description, but it'll go into a, a TIF fund. And from that fund, then the county commissioners can, can pay things out of that fund. So one of the things that they'll, that if they, what Duke wants them to do, is Duke wants them to pay them, reimburse them for some of the costs associated with building and operating this wind farm. Basically, they want to not pay property taxes for X number of years. And the reason for that is what the Duke people will say, is that the wind farm business is very competitive. And they're, they, before they even build the wind farm, they have sold the electricity. They entered into a contract. And so if they, if they can't get that tax break for five years, then it's going to cause, then their electricity that they generate on the new, on the new facility will cost more. And so then they won't be able to sell the electricity. So then they won't build the wind farm. So, you know, it's kind of like, you give me five years of a tax break, but then you'll have the tax revenue off of this for the next 15 years. Now, it's, it's not as simple as that. It's more complicated than that. So, so we'll, you know, we'll see what happens. The, well, one thing that's kind of unique about the, the proposal that I think is going to come to the county commissioners, is that the wind farms are, will primarily be located in the Kildare and the Peckham School District. And obviously, those are schools with very little enrollment. And in, in, in Peckham, which is where the wind farm north of Highway 11 is, they will not be on the state funding formula after January 1st of 2016, 2017. And the reality is, they're going to, they're going to have more funding than, I mean, they're, they're going to, people think about Frontier, and they talk about Frontier, and all the money Frontier's got. Well, Peckham will, will be another Frontier, because there's, because they have such a small student body, right out of 100 students. And the same name with Kildare. They're going to have lots of general fund wealth with a very small student body, there's 70 kids out of Kildare. So one of the things that, that the developer of this TIF proposal is looking at, is on this development that's south of Highway 11, is rather than that money going to Kildare and Peckham, because what they're, what they're, so here's another part of this. So, so what they can do is out of that TIF, they can, they don't have, they can give, they can give some money to Duke, but they can also take some money for the county commissioners to use, and they can give some of the money back to school districts. But if they give it back to school districts, it does not go through the state funding formula. So it's kind of like, kind of like federal money in that way. And so, one of the proposals is, is to take a percentage of that money, and I don't know if it's going to be, you know, 40% of the property taxes that would be paid to school districts, or 50% or 60%, whatever it is, is to take that money and to distribute it to Blackwell and Newkirk schools. Because, and I'm, I mean, I think probably when the, when the, when the guys, when the people looked at that who developed the TIF, they saw Newkirk and Blackwell as being the closest school districts to where the wind farms are going to be built. So that seemed to them to be the logical place for the money to go, if it wasn't going to go to Peckham and Kildare. I mean, obviously, that helps Blackwell and Newkirk get excited about maybe this project coming to play, even though Blackwell has lots of wind farm money already. So, so that's a little bit different. One of the things that, that I'm going to advocate for is that if they're, if the money's not, if they're going to take some money out of the TIF, and they're going to use it, send it to schools, then it ought to be distributed on a county-wide basis. It shouldn't just go to two districts. We all ought to get a part of it, if they're going to do that. And so the, the reason I talked to the board about it, Phil, and the reason I'm talking about it today, is that sometimes in the city, you know, we live in Ponca City, and we don't think about the county commissioners, and we don't think about what they do. But the reality is that, that they do represent us. Vance Johnson is the, is kind of represents the Ponca City area. And, and so I would just encourage you to think about this. I mean, you know, here, here's what I, here's what I, I told the, the county commissioner. You know, I don't know when this stops. If you give a TIF to Duke Energy to build wind farms, what if somebody else in the county wants to drill an oil well? Why don't you give a TIF for that oil well? You know, where do you stop? The wind farm industry is probably the most incentivized energy industry in the country right now. The amount of tax breaks they get from the, in our case, from the state and federal government are huge. And, and I, and I'm sure from the business side of this, they, they see those tax breaks as being necessary, then they're operating. It is more expensive to create wind power than it is to create natural gas or those kinds of... is more expensive to create wind power than it is to create natural gas, or those kinds of things. And as Oklahomans, if we have more wind farms go up, are we helping the price of natural gas stay low, which affects state budgets? Lots of big issues that we have to consider as a state, and as the county's got to consider. So, now, you know, the other part of me is this, if, if somehow the decision's made, if the proposal ends up being that we're going to take this money and we're going to distribute a percentage of it to all districts in the county, well, then, you know, I have to sit back and go, okay, how's this going to affect Ponca City? And it's, because, you know, we're not any different than other school district in Oklahoma, we're all desperate for revenue. You know, the other thing is, is about stuff like this, schemes like these, and it's a scheme, undermine the state funding formula. At the end of the day, they hurt every school district in Oklahoma, and especially if this becomes widespread. Because if, if you have a situation where they're doing a shopping center in Oklahoma City, and that's going into a TIF, and the school districts get money from that, but that's not going into state funding formula, then that hurts all of us. So, you know, there's lots of big issues here. And the biggest question is, you know, if, if they don't get the TIF, does Duke still, does the wind farm still go up? And we don't, and we don't know that. Does somebody else operate it? The energy does not stay in the state of Oklahoma, it all goes out of state. And then the other big issue that's in the future for our state is, they got to build some transmission lines to get this stuff out of here. And I just wrote an article last week, that there's, I forget now how many wind farms they've done in West Texas. And they were supposed to build this big transmission line that was going to take the power to Dallas, and Houston, and San Antonio, and Austin. But the power line's not been completed yet, and so, they have energy they can't really dispose of. So, it's an interesting dilemma, you know, as we try to move forward and try to figure all this out. And, you know, county commissioners have got a big decision to make. And I think, you know, every citizen in K County needs to let them know what they think. And, and the other part of this is, you know, it's easy to sit here and say, well, you know, you ought to pay your taxes, you shouldn't get a tax break. I think we also have to remember that, that there, that, that there are landowners involved in this, and there are, there are individuals who, you know, because of that tower on their property, they're going to generate thousands of dollars of income for their, for their, for their farming operation. And, and, you know, I'm sure if, if, if I, if I had, you know, if I had three wind towers getting ready to be put on my property, I promise you, I'd be lobbying the commissioners about how much we needed to do that. So, there's lots of things going on here, lots of moving parts, and, and they're going to have to be wise, and, and we'll have to see what happens. But I, again, more than anything else, I want people to understand that, that this is a serious issue, that I think, I think whatever happens in K County will be what's copied across the state of Oklahoma. If we, if we, if our county commissioners say yes, and I think commissioners in Grant, Grant County, and Beaver County, and all across the Panhandle and Southern Oklahoma, they're all going to be, they're, they're all going to say yes, that we're going to take, there are going to be millions and millions of dollars of revenue that should be going through the state funding formula, that at least for the first five years of those projects will not go through those formulas. And the other part of this is, is that the wind farm value deteriorates quickly over time. They have about a 25-year lifespan. So, if you, if you give a TIF for five years, the most, the five most productive years, from a property tax standpoint, of those wind farms, they're not, those, nobody, the school districts, county government, county agencies aren't getting any revenue from that. So, I mean, it's a, it's a big decision, you know?
We'll ask one more thing, and then we'll let you go, because I know it's a busy time for our schools, and I actually know the answer to this question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. First day of school, unless something unusual happens, have you mapped out David Pennington's day that day? Because I know you try to be in several different places at one time.
Yeah, I'm going to start my day at Washington, at the Pre-K Center, and then from there, we'll probably do Trout, then Woodlands, we'll kind of take the northeast part of the district first, and then work our way through. I try to stay out of the high school, you know, because it's just kind of, it's just kind of wild there. But, yeah, we're going to go to the 4K Center, give them a chance to, we're not, we're going to actually give them, that's going to be a, you know, I mean, you talk about something that somebody used to video, is taking 354-year-olds and trying to get them out of cars and into a building the first day. It's going to be a little, you know, now that I think about, I may not go to the 4K Center in the afternoon. I might wait till after lunch before I go over and see how things are going over there, but...
The word is chaos.
It'll be interesting. And you know what? It'll, it'll be for, for a week or so, but you know what? After that first week, it'll work, it'll run just like clockwork.
And we remind people right there by Washington, the Pre-K, there's a school zone that's kind of, it's not hidden, but it's not as well-marked as a lot of them. So, they're between anywhere from 5th to 9th on Highland, you really need to watch your speed.
Yeah, yeah. In fact, in fact, if I didn't have a reason to be on, on 7th Street, starting Wednesday, August 17th, until the last day of school, I wouldn't do it. I mean, you have high school kids driving to school, you've got, you've got Washington traffic, and you've got, and you've got Roosevelt traffic, really. So, there's lots of traffic on 7th Street. And, you know, which is the way it used to be, right, until we closed Washington about eight or nine years ago. So, you know, we're just, again, it's just interesting how things kind of go around.
Absolutely. Outstanding. Good luck, and watch the school zones. School starts on August 17. For Dr. Pennington and Chris Adams, I'm Phil Turner.